Welcome everyone to the Town of Poughkeepsie Planning Board Meeting for January 21st, 2021. Welcome to the new year, hopefully better than last year. Please join me for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to my flag-
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start off with a roll call of board members. Peter?
Here.
Ben? Oh, I see you're muted, Ben. I see you there, though.
Mine? Here.
Nicole?
Here.
Rocco?
Here.
Bob? I hear you, Bob.
I don't see Bob right now.
Joan?
Here.
Ahmed? Okay, I don't see if he had... Okay, we're missing Bob at the moment, and Ahmed. I thought Bob was going to attend tonight. Maybe just a little late. So at the moment, we have six board members. So we have a quorum. Tonight's meeting has been convened in accordance with the Governor's Executive Order 202.1, which suspends certain provisions of the open meetings law to allow municipal board to convene a meeting via video conferencing, in accordance with the executive order. The public has been provided with the ability to view and participate in tonight's meeting by computer, smartphone, or telephone, and to view the meeting on the usual cable television channels. The recording of the meeting will be posted on the town website, and a written transcript of the meeting will be prepared and provided at a later date. There has been a roll call of the board members, and there is a quorum present for this meeting. I've also confirmed with the secretary that this meeting has been duly noticed, and we have fulfilled our legal notice up requirements by posting a copy of the notice of the meeting on the town's webpage and on the town's bulletin board. We have emailed a copy of the notice to the media, and we have confirmed that the legal notices for the public hearings have been properly published. Thank you. Without further ado, we'll get right into the first agenda item, South Road Crossings amended site plan. Who's on here representing that tonight?
Ken Casmento from LRC. How are you this evening?
Hey, Ken, how are you?
Good. If I can, I'm gonna share my screen here.
Yep, briefly go over what your changes are.
Everyone can see this, correct?
Yes, perfect.
Okay. So, we're here for South Road Crossings tonight. The original Hilton Garden Inn has changed to a Home Two Suites. And as part of that change, there are some small site changes that were completed, as well as changes in the architecture in the building itself. So we wanted to come before the board and talk through the site plan modifications and look to get an amended architectural review, hopefully as well, if we're at that point. So fundamentally, the hotel was originally approved at 66 feet for five stories. We've reduced the hotel to a four-story hotel, down to 47 feet, 10 inches. There was a variance granted at the 66 feet, so we're still within that variance that was originally granted. The hotel footprint does increase from 16-9 to 18-372, but what has changed is, in the brand change, there is no fundamental hotel, first-floor services as a restaurant, a bar, and big meeting rooms and all that that was associated with the other brand. So, some of the floors area, the only shift that was done is the pool on the backside, and I'll show you that in a minute. The hotel was reduced from 120 to 111 rooms. We shifted the hotel slightly forward, about 36 feet, to make it a little closer to Route 9 and work in that area. Building 1 did increase slightly during, since the last time we've been in front of you for, now that they're under construction, some of the building plans specifically went up by 87 square feet. Building 2 went up about 191 square feet. Overall, the limits of disturbance that was originally designed hasn't changed and isn't changing. There is a small reduction in hard surface. It actually ends up being .04 now, and I'll explain that as we get a little further. A minor reduction in water and sewer, and as well as traffic as well. So what you have here is the original layout, as was approved in 2019. The change of the layout really fundamentally falls in this red line that is kind of around the hotel area. It's created, still has the spine, a little different of an entry. The back portion of the hotel itself is the pool with the pool patio. There was some unclear about what was there as the pool, that's just an outdoor patio. What we did do as part of some of those comments, as you'll see here, we've since amended the plan based on some of the staff comments that we've received to date. The first being, we clarified the pool area in the back. The pool is a one-story area and indoor. It does not go to the full four stories. The four-story hotel is only on the center part of the building. This is merely an outdoor patio. The second is, there were some spaces that we included over by building 3, five spaces in particular, that now has gone to green space. We've removed those because of potential traffic concern in that area. One of the things that kind of got missed in when we were redoing it was the initial connection that was historically through the middle to the hotel. We neglected to get from this walk here in the center across and over to the hotel, so we put that back in as well. One of the items was a bike rack, which again, just got missed in putting it back in there, so we've added back the bike rack. And we clarified the drop-off area, so it's a one-way drop-off, and we've created a stop bar for the exit there as well. And then the last one changed since we submitted was really adjusting the garbage in the back. We recognize that it's 90 degrees to the drive, but it does work for the trucks. And we'll provide staff with truck turn movements and stuff before. We've pushed this in a little further into the site, into the green area. This really works for the user in its location and proximity to the doors. And it's also finished really well, and it ends up matching actually the buildings themselves when it comes around. Overall, the site grading doesn't change. The ponds that are there are actually, if you've gone out, they are in construction and basically roughed in now. But none of the work that we're proposing really changes anything that, outside of that area there. The grades relatively stay the same. This was a quick view of what we had originally for the Hilton Garden Inn. And then this is what we're looking at now with the Home Two Suites for kind of a rendering there. We can get into more discussions, but these are some elevations when we go through potential architectural review. But one of the comments and questions was about the entry, so I just wanted to come back and touch on that. Is, the outside area is, as you can see here in the patio on the right, is a large concrete area, and the main entrance is off to the right-hand side. And the way this is teed is almost like an L. There's an open air space here with some chairs and seating in a patio area along the drop-off line. So, to give some clarity, we'll provide some detail, more details of that as we, for the next submission as we go in forward, or conditions of approval hopefully for there. So, I have some of the old floor plan. You can see here, there was a lounge, a fitness room, a pool room, the dining area, meeting area. And now when you look at the new, it really is about rooms on the first floor. There's some mechanical rooms in here, a small break room, breakfast. This is very limited in its food prep. It's all prepackaged type food. There's no cooking kitchen or anything like that here. We're still providing a grease trap, as we know. Franco, that's one of his concerns over any type of food preparation, so that's remained. The sewer and water trunk lines remain. The pool is off to the back now, in the back area with the patio off to the right, as you saw on the site plan. And we're proposing a sign on the building, obviously, but it's going to meet the same square footage as it was before, so we wouldn't need any variances that we had for signage either. So, that is where I was at for that. If we want to go in more for architectural, we can get to that, but we'll come back to you for site plan discussion.
Yeah, let's do the site plan first. Thanks, Ken.
Yep, thank you.
Let have Kristen give the department's view.
Yeah, thank you, Ken, for the overview. For the board's edification, the application is on for public hearing this evening, seeker review, coastal consistency review, amended site plan review, and architectural review, noting that architectural review applies specifically to Buildings 1, 2, and the hotel. We felt that it, staff felt that it was cleanest to just have the board, in essence, reissue an architectural review. It restarts the clock for the applicant, and it just makes it cleaner for carrying forward with this particular site plan amendment. So staff had a number of comments, mostly pertaining to maybe accessibility, cleaning up the plans, you know, providing some more detail, and, you know, in the way of not really being substantive, but there are some, there is some cleaning up to do on the plans, and I do appreciate Ken hitting on some of those comments this evening. But some of the items were related specific that I brought up, or other staff have brought up, are related specifically to architectural review, so I'll allow the board to go forward with that a little bit later. But other comments were related to, like, the number of parking spaces proposed. I appreciate the comment about adjusting where the refuse is going to be proposed and located, but perhaps losing a space or so to the north of that, just to confirm that there's no circulation issues. But the plan itself, at large, meets the required parking requirements, so the board may just want to confirm that they're happy with circulation, pedestrian access, and things of that nature. So, staff has left it open for the board. It really is their purview, whether or not they feel comfortable to move forward after they discussed with the applicant this evening the project. But the board has a recommendation prepared for opening and closing the public hearing, adopting a seeker resolution, providing a coastal consistency review, and adopting a conditional amended site plan review. If the board feels that they would actually like to see another rendition of the plans prior to staff just subsequent to this meeting, working with the applicant, you do have the option before you to defer action.
All right, thanks, Kristen. And as you said, it's like Ken has already cleaned up some of the comments that you had made ahead of the meeting here, so that's great. This is on for public hearing, so I-
Actually, Don is on, too, if you want to grab-
Oh, yeah, Don?
And Mark Petrow is also on, I believe.
Let me start with Don for a public hearing.
Yeah, we don't have a lot on this one. We had a few concerns about the overhang on the building and some other things that Ken's already mentioned, so I'm sure we can work those out later.
Okay, great. And Mark, how, what do you think of the parking changes and circulation?
Yeah, so we reviewed the recent submission material, and we concur with the summary provided by Mesa Consulting that it would overall result in minor, overall slightly less trips or traffic related to this change on the amended site plan here. A lot of our comments relate to circulation and signage-related items. One of the comments, which was the bigger item for us, was the pedestrian access to the hotel that was previously approved. And I see from the recent drawings that Ken had provided, they reinstalled that crossing to the access to the hotel, so we do appreciate that. A lot of it, a lot of the other comments are signage-related, so there is just some coordination that might need to be done with the fire department as it comes to the drive, the one-way drive up by the port of chair for the hotel. And one of the other items that is one of the more significant, maybe compared to some of the signage-related comments, is just the building overhang for the King Smoothie, Smoothie King location. There's now an overhang that extends over the whole drive-through lane, which is 9.2 feet wide, and with vertical posts in the striped area. And potentially maybe consider a vertical clearance signage or bar in advance of that building overhang. But again, some of the other comments were minor as it relates to signage and circulation on the site.
Is that aisle width and that drive-through sufficient, then, with those posts there?
Nine feet is okay. It'd be nicer to have a minimum of 10 feet, but I'm not sure what the applicant has related to that, if it can go a little bit wider or not. I'm not sure the specifics, but I would like to at least see 10 feet, maybe, but nine feet can be doable, but it gets a little bit tight.
All right, thanks. Thanks for your comments. This is on for a public hearing, so I move that we open the public hearing for this project?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. I see Bob is on now as well.
So if you'd like to make a comment, if you could raise your hand if you're on Zoom. If you're on the phone, you can use star six to unmute yourself. I'm not seeing any raised hands. And not hearing anyone, or seeing anyone unmute themselves.
Yeah, this is a change to a previous plan, so I couldn't expect a lot.
Right. I think we're okay.
All right, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Well, call to question, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, let's go around the board for comments tonight. Start with Peter.
First, you know, my video is not working, and I don't know whether it's on my end or it's on your end, but it's not on purpose.
Okay.
I only have one question, really, and that is, the shift in brands. Was the prior brand a suite-type of hotel?
Yes.
Okay. Otherwise, you know, I don't think there's anything here. I think you've pretty much covered everything. I don't think there's anything here that couldn't be covered by the staff. And, you know, I see this moving forward. That's my only comments.
All right, thanks, Peter. Yeah, they're both suite types. Ken, do you know about how long a typical stay is in the home?
Um, I don't, but Jared or Zach, you're on the line here, if you would unmute. They're the operators from Brant.
If they're willing to-
They may have a better understanding of that.
Just something I thought of, if you're willing to disclose it.
Yeah, this is Jared Schillinger here from Brant Hospitality. I don't know, you know, if I went back to Hilton and got an exact average of stay, I don't know. Probably two to three days would be my guess. It's not, it's not an overly lengthy length of stay, I know that.
Okay.
These room types just give a little bit more room and, I think, fit more into the core brands that we develop as a whole. And we're really high on this brand within the Hilton family, which ultimately decided and made us shift.
Okay, great. Thanks. It's one I had never heard of, so it does seem that it's growing. All right, let me go to Ben now for comments.
I don't really have anything, I think everything was pretty much covered. Everything looks good.
Thanks, Ben.
Nothing else that could be handled by staff.
All right. Nicole?
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of the things were already covered. I just wanted to talk about excessive lighting. It looked like there was some possible excessive lighting under that overhang. So just be mindful of that, otherwise it looks good.
And to answer that, Nicole, real quick, we're already working on that backwards. We saw that as it went in, as to the developing of that. There's just a number of heads that were underneath. There's a duplicative number in there that we need, so we'll be able to cut that down.
Okay, great.
Okay, thanks, Ken.
Do you know the lighting temperature offhand, Ken? We're trying to keep the 3,000 or whatever.
I don't right offhand.
Okay.
I can dig it up if you'd like.
You can look at that with the staff as well.
Yep, yep, we will.
All right, move on to Rocco.
Nothing here. Everything looks quite good. I'm glad this thing is moving along.
Yep. And Bob?
Yeah, I don't have any questions. I think it, you know, looks good to me to move forward.
All right, thank you, Bob. And Joan?
Hi, yeah, I tend to agree with everyone. I just have a quick question. Ken, do you have a rendering of the refuse enclosure, since it's going to be modeled to look like the exterior of the building?
I don't have a rendering of that with me tonight. I'm sure we can get an example for, to include as part of the package when we're done. I know that, you know, Zach and Brant have indicated that the color scheme will match the building itself in that area, and it's a masonry structure.
Okay, all right. That was my only comment.
Sounds like it meets town code then, and can work with Kristen to coordinate that, make sure it fits in. My comments, it looks like you've addressed a bunch already, Ken, with your opening thing. I just want to make sure the HVAC is screened, and I think I saw that in a-
Yes.
Get that with architecture. I appreciate the sidewalk connected to the hotel now, the way it was. But I still have, I still have a question with the sidewalk, looking at it. If somebody comes out of the hotel and tends to go south around Building 4, hoping to get over to the plaza, especially when, if that other connection is made there.
Would you like me to share my screen again to see that?
I guess the piece of missing sidewalk I'm thinking of is south of Retail 2.
So there, whoops, that's-
So, you know, if somebody's coming along the south edge of the property there on that sidewalk, and they get up to Building 2, then there's no connection to get out to Route 9, unless you go all the way around Building 2.
This is pretty consistent with what we had approved before. This pattern of walk never changed.
Yeah, I know, I know, that was what we had before.
And I'd just like to note, you know what I mean, Building 3 and Building 4, as we don't have tenants yet, that may change, you know, hopefully, as we're now getting under construction, the owners are seeing a little more activity with that. So hopefully, we can put tenants in those buildings and rework these areas, and we'd be back before you, likely, for a modification, because I doubt we'll find a building that'll be exactly that square footage and area, you know what I mean, in that area. So this may get tweaked and modified a little bit later as well, this connection in here. But, so you're looking here, though, Carl, is what you're thinking?
Yeah, I wonder if that can be just, I know it's a snow storage area and such, but-
I'm sure we can work-
Get a piece of sidewalk, be added in there to make that more of a complete system.
Yep. We can do that.
And where you took the parking spaces away next to Building 3, yeah, there you can do some landscaping there, whatnot, but-
Yes.
Wondering if, you know, since people are not staying in this hotel for long times, I'm not sure you really need the bike rack over there. I think it'd be more appropriate to have a small one, at least between Buildings 1 and 3 there, so maybe somewhere there instead.
You think to move it up there? Okay.
Yeah, it's that, I don't know that-
I don't have a problem with putting one over there.
Don't know that many hotel guests would bring their bikes with them if they're-
Yep.
So I thought that'd be a more appropriate place to, to have one between the other two buildings on the south side there, so.
Okay.
That's my only-
I didn't hear you address how you were getting the pedestrians from the south side of the hotel to Building 4?
They come across here, and then there's across that.
There's a sidewalk there.
And we've, we've never put a sidewalk across the drive-through here because of the fact that, you know, it's a bank, so we're assuming that, you know, there's not going to be a lot of walk-through there. And I don't really like having to cross the drive-through, but we could.
It's not showing on the plans here, but you do have the crosswalk across the main.
Correct.
This is the, you know, this is the grading plan or drainage, but, yeah, there we go.
Yeah, it's right there.
So there you have that. So I'm just thinking, if somebody comes out of the hotel looking to get down to the, over to a restaurant at the mall, or whatever, and- That's why I asked about that extra piece there. And eventually, we hope to get a connectivity there as well, so.
Right. To, yeah, to the south, correct.
Which would benefit both the mall and hotel guests. All right. Let's move on with some resolutions.
I move that the planning board hereby determine that the South Road Crossings amended site plan would not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the recent set forth in the seeker negative declaration for an unlisted action dated January 21st, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board determine that the South Road Crossings amended site plan is consistent with the Town of Poughkeepsie's approved local waterfront revitalization program.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Call to question by roll call. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for South Road Crossings amended site plan subject to the following: Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies, and said response to be reviewed by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of and not limited to the following for nine.
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant conditional. Call to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Let's do some architectural. Ken?
All right. Let me start sharing my screen again, if that's all right? And then I will turn it over to Zach and Jared. Start here.
This is Zach with Brant Hospitality. In the previous Hilton Garden Inn, we just kind of had a lot of vertical lines, and we're just kind of, when we're switching to the Home 2 design, we're going with more of a horizontal line with some same color massings to kind of fit in with the the buildings in front of it, the retail buildings.
Okay.
We're kind of sticking with the same materials as we did, we had in the Hilton Garden Inn. It's ephes, some stone on the first floor. And then we're trying to work with the prototypical design of the Home 2. Ken, yep. And then, again, it's just kind of the basic look. When you look at the color schemes, color evaluations, we're just, it's mostly prototypical design. We're just using the horizontal lines to kind of make the building feel shorter and more home-like. And the materials and colors, you see, they're pretty prototypical. We tried to kind of use the colors that we had in the Hilton Garden Inn, and also just to kind of match in with other retail buildings around in this development. Ken, if you could. And like Ken said, the entrance patio, we're just trying to kind of match the square footage that we had for the patio in the previous project, and create a nice pedestrian area as you enter the building. There is some current concerns in other jurisdictions with the- There is some current concerns in other jurisdictions with the beacon tower that you see in the photo in the lower right. And the, also the kind of reveal and accent band that goes up.
Yeah, vertical strip seems to be.
And we're, we're trying to, in, in prototypical design, they want a spotlight up from the ground and, and we understand that's never a good option for cities. And so we're going to be using something similar to the photo in the lower right. We're going to use strip lighting that goes up, so we get the lighting of that accent that the branch requests. And we also try to limit the light that's coming off the building. The beacon, it is a lit kind of tower at the top, but we use shading, white shades to prevent light from either spilling out of that those glass panels or to cause too much light distortion in the sky, so.
Okay, yeah, I've seen, see, just examples online, there's different, different brightnesses of, of that, of that top beacon there. So that was a concern that meets our, our town lighting code. Putting the vertical, putting the vertical strip LEDs is better than the, the uplighting, as you say.
So just to move to building one, you've seen this before when we left before last, as Kristen pointed out. The request was made to make a vertical component, not a vertical, but a, a slanted roof component to the, to the architectural. The, the last version you saw was this here, as you remember, that was flat and, and we worked with staff during final sign-offs to get to this component here, which was what was originally approved before. And we wanted to just push that back in front of the board, so as Kristen pointed out, to make everything consistent at, at one time for approvals for the architectural review and that. So with that, I'll turn it back over to you guys and I can go to, stop sharing or go to a particular screen if you'd like to talk through something.
Yep. And, and you don't have any architecturals yet for the other two, retails, right?
Correct. Building three and building four, we're not seeking approvals for any of the architectural there. There's no, there's no move right now to build those. We're under construction on both one and two.
Okay. I, I guess my, you know, it all looks good to me. I think the biggest concern I have is how bright is that top hat, but. But what, what say anybody else on the board? Let's just chime in.
I, I have a question about the roof, and that is, you have the HVA systems mounted on the roof? And if they are, are, will they be shielded?
Yes, yes, they, they are on the roof. Usually it is, consists of just a large DOAS, a, a energy recovery system. Otherwise, the, the PTACs and the corridor conditioning is handled with small condensers. We will shield the large equipment and make sure that it meets or matches kind of the finishes of the building.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I do see that on the elevation now, it says a, you know, pre-finished metal screen shielding around it.
I have a quick question. In the photograph that you showed us in the lower right-hand corner with the, I think you were showing it for the uplighting, are the materials in that building similar to the materials that are going to be used in this building? Like, are the colors going to be the same as that, or is, were you showing us that just more for the tower portion of the project?
No, I, I, that's, I, I use that image mostly to kind of relay the, the, how the lighting in that reveal will be handled.
Okay.
Yeah, they, that looked darker colors than, than what you're showing here now.
Yeah, and it was evening. But yeah, other than that, I don't, I don't really have any comment.
Okay, anyone else have any issues? I think we need to, you know, make sure that the, the top hat light, it conforms, other than, and you said you, you can mute that to some extent, so.
Is the, the, in the lighting, in the lighting plan, is that taken into consideration that?
I don't know if anyone, I did not see it on the lighting plan, that's why I was.
Yeah.
No, it, it's, that, that's hard, I mean, photometrics are measured at the ground.
Yeah, so that's totally not going to be at the ground, but.
That doesn't reach the ground. So that, that's, that's not, there's, I, I don't know if Zach, you have a way of providing information to show that it won't be going uplit into the sky?
Yeah, I mean, we've, we've got a couple of these projects in our portfolio and, you know, they, they, it's pretty much just like the light that you would see coming out of any of the guest room units, if the lights were on in that, that unit.
Okay, so it's not.
The, the tower, the glass of that beacon is actually colored, kind of a bluish color, and it's, it just pretty much gets backlit, so it, it won't be throwing a lot of light out away from that tower. It's mostly just a lit piece of glass.
Okay, that doesn't sound too bad.
Well, this is, Eric, I'll just suggest the, you can provide, if, if, in your lighting plans, if you could provide information with your lighting plans on the type and the strength and the characteristics, you know, the lighting characteristics for the light source, that, that should be readily available and, and might help.
Yes, we can provide that on the lighting plan, some, some details to it.
Ken, I have a question, and, and actually it might be more for the home two folks, but is there a way to, to reduce the height of that beacon? You know, it just, you know, I, I appreciate branding and the aesthetic, but, you know, if that light is ultimately not really serving a, a purpose, you know, the town is typically, you know, looking to eliminate excessive lighting. So I just thought I would pose the question, you know, it's not like the board won't approve it to, you know, but I, I just thought I would pose the question. Because isn't the home two sign itself going to be eliminated?
No, the home two sign is, is, is proposed on the building, that, that, there.
It doesn't have any illumination inside?
Uh, Zach?
It, it will be illuminated.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah, so that, that's why I was asking about the beacon on the top, if it, if it's, you know, necessary.
Well, it, it is a brand design, they, that's kind of their signature. We can look at reducing the height of it to make it more of a shorter band, lit band, but it, it is the brand standard, so it's kind of their signature.
And what is the height currently listed at?
The height of the band, Carl?
The height of the band, yeah.
It, it's roughly six feet.
Six feet, okay. Yeah, just, I'm just looking at examples on, of other home twos. Sometimes the band looks a little narrower and sometimes taller, so something that could be explored, I think. Alright, I move we accept architecture as presented with the condition that the review of that top hat lighting with staff is satisfactory of the, meet our town codes.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, everyone.
Glad the construction's going well out there and wish you continued good luck in getting some tenants.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good night.
Thank you, you too.
Thanks, Ken.
I'm not going too far, I have the next one.
Something else with home in the name, we've got.
Won't lie, this one's got me a few times between the two of them, yeah.
The At Home Store, At Home Store shops at South Hills. Go ahead, Ken, with the presentation.
Alright, Carl, would you like me to begin? I didn't hear you.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, go ahead and give us an overview of.
Sure. Ken Casamento from LR State, representing DLC and At Home at the South Hills Mall. This is an amended site plan. Whoops, going too quick. Amended site plan for the South Hills Mall. It's an S H E district, it's a seventy-two acre parcel, it was last approved in two thousand eight when the mall was kind of demolished and kind of broken up a little bit into what it is today. This is a renovation of the existing Kmart building for the At Home Store. There's no real change in water or sewer demand or utilities going into the building. The majority of this project is a renovation of the facade. The former greenhouse, approximately seven thousand square feet will be removed where the auto bays are on the, what would be the eastern side of the building. That'll be renovated. The whole parcel or project area is approximately two point four six acres, including the building. The disturbance is about point four one acres overall. As it sits, this is the approved site plan. The project area is, is outlined here on the southern portion of the property. Again, right down in that area in the old Kmart building, for those who are familiar. At Home site plan here, as we move through, this is the demo that'll occur. There's a greenhouse, as it is here, with the, what is now the garage bays to the north of it. That'll move to a sidewalk parking area. Will create, will continue what is now the island further south and create a one-way-through movement. As part of that, also a corral for carts to the main entrance that is on the north. We're going to take two spaces and come out through and break that up so that, you know, customers can move their cart through the island rather than getting around it, because there's no real way through it right now. Through some of the comments that were, were raised through staff review and what we've seen to date, the, you know, we, we've added a little more landscaping, a few trees in here. The island here, albeit an island, we really are concerned about putting trees in, it's not quite big enough to really make it a sustainable island with paths on both sides with the snow and, and the removal. So we'd like to keep that as long as we had over there. We will add a hydrant. The existing dock that's back here is going to remain in its location. The existing refuse area and electrical equipment will remain. There's a compactor that's back here now, and the FTC connection is here as well.
Can I just ask quick, Ken?
Sure.
And that back there, like, how much, how much of that is the At Home responsible for versus the, versus the mall management? Because, you know, the pavement's really bad back there and there's, and there's some dumping going on against the, the wall there.
Yeah, so they're, they're going to clean this up against the building itself i- in this area here. Part of the, the, this southern end of the mall, back when the old owner of the property, had the property, Vornado, and they demolished it, there was a lot of public comment about that end of the mall and dumping and excessive light and everything else from, so as part of the demalling and the, the lack of use of that parking area, it was agreed at that time to decommission the three high bay lights that are in that area. Also barricading off the actual parking area, because there were late-night cars going in and doing drifting and other things in that area as well as dumping. So they blocked it off with the barricades to keep pedestrians or keep people with vehicles out of that area to avoid that. The mall now does have, have security, that's even in overnighted security for those areas to make sure none of that does happen anymore. So that's kind of where that is there. How, how we got to that.
So it's overall, overall the mall's management responsibility in that.
Yes.
Taking care of that. Right, there's a, yeah, there was a mattress and couch and something dumped there when I looked.
Behind the building, you mean?
Yep.
And, and I, I think again, you know, some of that is because it's on the end, it's easy, no, there's no activity there on a daily basis now that this is getting revived and we'll have activity.
That will be.
That'll be removed. There, there are going to, one of the comments that was raised was about lighting and there are some, no pole lights that would be added for this project, they're all existing. But there are, will be some building security lighting along the side that's upgraded, being that some of them may not work anymore or, or not on a routine basis as they were before. So they'll all be upgraded with the new store facade upgrade.
Okay, thanks. Continue with your presentation.
One of the, you know, this was the application as we proposed it, both the north face with the main entrance slightly off from where it used to be down in the corner, and this being the east elevation here. We, we heard the comments and, and the applicant is really trying to move our project along because of time constraints and wanting to be, needing to be open for a various number of reasons. So we've since modified the architecture and the signage specifically. Not, not the, the colors or any of that, but mainly the signage to comply with the, the code. We will be coming and looking for a variance most likely and talking to the ZBA about signage in the future on the building. But, you know, the goal was to hopefully move this project at least this way, so they can get started on the renovations and hit their timelines and, and things like that. Hopefully, if we can satisfy the board this evening. The west elevation here with, is paint, and then the south elevation down below. That's really the short of it.
Alright, thanks, Ken. Looks like you're already addressing some of the issues. Go ahead, Kristen.
Thanks again, Ken, for the project overview for the board's evaluation. Once again, this application is on for public hearings, seeker review, amended site plan review, and architectural review. Once again, staff had, you know, a number of comments, but nothing by way of being substantive. You know, staff does think that it can work with the applicant to get some cleared, cleared up, cleaned up plans. You know, again, the, the signage was one of those sticking points, but again, the board, you know, you'll be conducting your architectural review this evening if you choose to move forward. Staff has provided a recommendation for opening and closing the public hearing, adopting a seeker resolution, adopting a conditional amended site plan approval, and, you know, allowing for board, the board to conduct architectural review. Again, this is similar to the last project you just heard. If, if the board is amenable, staff would be willing to work with the applicant to address the remaining comments. But again, that's up to you as a board. If, if not, you are set up also with a recommendation to open the public hearing, adjourn and defer action.
Alright. I think one of your comments was the cart corrals, they, and they are required, right, by town? Yes.
Yes, yep, and so it sounds like they're going to be making some site plan modifications to include information about them. So we would be looking for that very detailed and permitted information on plans.
Get that worked out quickly.
And then one follow-up to what I had stated is that we did receive our Dutchess County planning comments, so again, similar to the last application, you would be able to go forth with a conditional approval this evening. The, the county did remit comments, but it's local concern with comments, so there's nothing stopping the board from being able to grant that approval. Though their comments are noteworthy and I would urge the board to review them and discuss them with the applicant.
Yep. And it looks like he's already addressed the, some of the signage, it was the main comments of the county that Ken has already done some addressing. Alright. Don, any? All right. Don, any thing from an engineering standpoint? Is this just a reuse of a existing?
Uh, no, we, we have a bunch of smaller comments, but nothing that we can't work out later.
All right. In that case, let's, uh, public hearing, so I move we open the public hearing for this project.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Anyone in the audience wish to comment on this application? Can you raise your hand with the chat feature in Zoom?
Yep, we have a raised hand from, let's see, Stephen Farrell. You wanna unmute yourself and provide your comments? Mr. Farrell?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yep.
Go ahead.
Oh yeah, I'd just like to voice my support for this, this project. I think it's a great idea to reuse the old Kmart building that's been sitting vacant for so long. I mean, it's an eyesore on the dead end of a plaza. I think it'd be a great idea. That's it.
All right, thanks for your.
Thank you.
Comments.
And then there's someone named Michael with a hand up. Nice name. Michael? Oh, you almost had it there. I saw you unmute briefly.
Yeah, there we are. I had a slow computer with the video going. Good evening everybody and, and thank you very much for opening this up to public discussion. I live in the, basically be in the Merrywood Development, which is, and right at the southwest corner of the, of that mall property lot. And I'm also in agreement with the previous community member. I, I definitely support this project. I think it's a great idea. One thing I will mention with Mr. Casmello, Casmento brought up with the, the site plan layout. On that southwest corner, there was a discussion about the midnight and late evening drifting cars and loud noise. That's still present. I'm wondering what can the new occupant of that building, can they do anything to more or less lock that area out? Or is there anything that could be done? Because this is still occurring and it's becoming to the point where, where it's annoying. And one evening, which I thought was pretty, pretty humorous, apparently they must have crashed into something and then the, the drifting stopped for a few weeks and now it's resuming again. So I was just, um, just curious what, what could be done and is anything that At Home can do to block up that property or do anything to maybe remove that parking lot altogether and turn it into a, you know, a, a grass area or, you know, some, some type of, you know, green area? I know there's forever green in the perimeter outside the fence property, but is there anything that can be done with that parking lot just so people can't drive in there anymore? That, that would be my only question.
Okay. Thanks for bringing that to our attention, Michael. We thought the barriers were doing their job, but apparently not.
Um, I will also point out, I believe, uh, I'm gonna call you Mr. Michael because I don't know your last name. I apologize, but, um, Michael, uh, there are owners of the property listening to this conversation right now. So, um, you know, perhaps that's another conversation for staff here to have with them.
Yeah, I think that, that needs to be addressed, um, attempts to do.
I, I can't provide my last name. It's George, Jerry, and it just, um, you probably wouldn't be able to say it, but I'm, I'm over at 19 Old English way.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no, thank you again. I, I think this is a great project. I'm really in support for it and happy to see an occupant go in that mall because it will bring some more activity back there and at least deter the other things that are occurring.
Yep, that's great. All right.
And we, we will review it with the owners as well as see if we can come up with some options and put that forward to you as, as part of our next submission as well.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Yeah, there might be a barrier, one of those barriers out of place or something that needs to be re-put back.
If I can, I, I can address that. Uh, this is Glenn Wilson from DLC Management. As you're aware, we are in, in discussions now with your councilman on options for that property. You know, we, we are looking to, to try and do something with that vacant parking lot on it. You know, certainly I'm aware of the situation there. I will work, you know, to make sure that that area gets re-secured. It's, it's a problem for us too because we gotta constantly pay to get that stuff removed. And we have been working with the police in the past with that drifting and, and hence that's, you know, we put some of those blocks back just for that reason. But I, I hear you loud and clear and I will make it an effort to get with the police department and with our nighttime security to look into that immediately. We don't want that. It's a liability for us and it's not good for business. And certainly we want to be neighborly to our, our surrounding residential constituents.
All right, thanks for the, those comments Glenn. Appreciate it.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment on this application? Again, you can raise your hand if you're on Zoom, star six to unmute yourself if you're on the phone. Okay, I'm not seeing anything. So.
All right. At this point I move we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question. All is in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. All right, go around the board for additional comments. Start with Joan this time.
Hi there. Um, I do not have any comments. I think it is a great reuse of the building as well and, and looking forward to its completion.
Thanks Joan. Bob?
Uh, I don't have any comments on the plan. I think it's, um, it's a good use of that property. It's kind of been resembling parts of a ghost town the way, uh, I mean, I realize there's a lot of stores that have filled in the blanks, but I was just curious where or who do you think their main competition is, looking at, you know, what the store sells, et cetera? I don't think there's any one particular store in that South Hills, but what's your, what's your view of where your competition's gonna come from?
Andrew, I was gonna ask you to.
So I can, I'm Andrew Dabbin with At Home and I can kind of speak to that a little bit. So, um, we're, I guess it, it's hard to kind of put us into one category. We kind of, the way I like to describe it is we're kind of a, a mix of a, a home goods on steroids. So we sell things similar to what a, what a, you know, home goods will typically be about 30,000 square feet. We're about three times that size, but mostly it's home decor. So I think throw pillows, wall art. You know, it kind of grabs from a couple of different stores. We do have a large seasonal selection, so we do sell patio furniture, Christmas decorations at Christmas time, Halloween decorations at Halloween. So it kind of pulls from a bunch of different areas, but home goods is probably the best comparison.
Okay. No, it sounds good. I might be one of your frequent customers the way it sounds, so thanks. That's, that's all I've got.
Yep, I think we're all, we're all looking forward to, to seeing it.
Andrew, Andrew, can you just give a little bit of background on the company?
Yeah, I apologize.
Oh, sure, happy to. So, um, At Home, we are, um, we, we got our start in, in Texas. I'm actually based in Texas. It was a small company that started outside of San Antonio, kind of grew to a, a regional retailer in the southeast known as Garden Ridge. About five years ago, we rebranded as At Home with the eye to go more national. And so we've slowly been kind of growing throughout the country. I believe now we're in the low 40s in terms of the states, but in a lot of those states, there's maybe just one store. The closest store to this location, we do have a store in Middletown. Um, and we have a store that'll be opening in two weeks, actually in Nannewett. Shops in Nannewett down near the border with New Jersey. So I'm very excited to be coming to Poughkeepsie, but that's, as of right now, we have about 219 stores. With the eventual eye to hopefully grow to four, five, 600 stores, so.
Okay, great. Well, we wish you luck and we appreciate you making use of the empty space here. Let's move on to additional comments from board members. Were you finished Rocco? Or Bob?
Yes.
Okay, Rocco?
Uh, I'd like to see this project move along and it looks like a great use of the space. And I'm sure I'll be shopping there as well. Good luck. Thank you.
Nicole?
Yeah, ultimately there's not a lot to say here. A lot of this stuff is cosmetic. You'll just have to figure out the signage Ken. That's the only thing I think that you're gonna have to deal with. Other than that, good luck. Can't wait to check out the store.
All right, and Ben?
Welcome to Poughkeepsie. That's it, no other comments.
Peter?
Uh, my only comment would be looking at the east and north elevations, they're a huge improvement. So thanks for that.
All right.
That's all I have.
Great, we'll, we'll do our, we'll do our architecture as well. Uh, my comments are the, let's see, I think we did that. So, so you don't rely on the parking at all? You won't rely on any of that parking to the, to the south that.
No.
That we were discussing. Same way Kmart did not really. Checking my notes here.
Excuse me.
And the, oh, the east side, uh, east side, oh, we could talk about that during architecture, but you're eliminating, eliminating those garage doors or?
Yes, uh, the, the garage doors go. And it cleans up the whole facade there and there's a, just a, a door on the side that becomes kind of a drop-off area, a handicap area and there's a, a pickup area. Andrew, if you want to speak to.
Cause it, cause it looked like a small, just a small service door in the center and.
Correct.
You know, if you're picking up big patio furniture or something, how, you know, how big a door do you need to?
Can you bring that up on the screen Ken?
Yep.
So Andrew, do you want to kind of go through your elevations here?
Um, yeah, I can briefly touch on them. So, um, as they were saying, just kind of on the south side, the, the goal there is really to have our accessible parking and then some pickup stalls. Like a lot of retailers, um, we have tried to expand the options that are available, especially given that the ongoing pandemic. Um, and so we've chosen to propose striping those, some, the remainder of those stalls on that side, pickup stalls. We do offer buy online, pick up in store, but also some of our larger items that just gives a place that, that doesn't require somebody going across the drive out to load furniture or, um, you know, larger items into their car.
Would that be accessed through that side door, Andrew?
I guess that's, I'm wondering where the larger, if it's larger items, how do they get out of that little door and where, where, how does that work?
Yeah, um, probably, not, not usually, we try, um, we, most of, pretty much all the merchandise would come out the front door and then along the side. Um, that door on the side is really for emergency egress. You know, most of the items we sell are not gonna be super large. They can mostly fit through a, a, a normal sized door. But we do have double sliders at the front, so, um, that door would really just be for emergency egress.
Okay, so you'd use a dolly out the front and around the corner to the cars waiting for pickup? Okay. That clears it up my concern. All right, I think we're ready for motions.
I move that the planning board hereby determine that the At Home Store at the shops at South Hills amended site plan would not have a significant, significant adverse impact on the environment and that no environmental impact statement will be required for the reasons set forth in the secret negative declaration for an unlisted action dated January 21st, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
I move the planning board grant conditional site plan approval for the At Home Store at shops at South Hills. Amended site plan approval subjects to the following. Respond to comments of the planning board and those received from town departments and agencies and said response to review by the planning department as to adequacy and completeness inclusive of but not limited to the following, one through eight.
Second.
Moved and seconded to grant conditional, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. All right, so look at the architecture review. We've touched on it a bit already. Uh, myself, the only thing I noticed is that, you know, our town code currently tries to avoid windowless facades. I mean, the, the north elevation looks great. It kind of matches, keeps all the existing windows for the most part. Not sure if there's anything you could do there on the east side. Cause eventually something will, could be built on that grassy area across from it. That's my thought. I don't, anybody else have any comments?
My only comment would be that it's, really it's pre-existing.
Yep. It is pre-existing. I know some, you know, we have a, if there's no, maybe it's just storerooms back there and you don't want windows there, but. Another choice would be some faux windows, which Walgreens across the street there had, had done about 10 years ago. For, for their back.
I can't think of what those look, I'm trying to think of what those look like, the faux windows. Are they a big improvement or not much?
Um, it, it helped the look of, of it for sure versus just a blank brick wall it was.
Right.
I don't know, what, what say you? Any, any other board, board members want to chime in what they think?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have any issue with it the way it is now. I kind of agree with Peter that it is a pre-existing building and, I know, I think the front looks nice, so I don't have a, a comment or a problem with that.
All right. Anyone else?
I tend to agree. This is Rocco. Uh, I tend to agree with the other board members.
All right.
This is Eric. I'm just wondering, cause they are contemplating developing some other use in that south parking lot area. There's no plan for what it's gonna be, but I'm wondering if there's any way to, maybe, Ken, is there enough room adjacent to the building so that if a site plan came forward with some use to the south, would there be space alongside the building to put in some landscaping or something? Since another development on the south couldn't.
Back here?
Change the building itself?
Uh, back here, you're saying, behind the building itself?
Yeah.
The, the difficulty to that is, um, the road and the proximity of the road with the, the bay and the, the doors here creates this void space in here. And, you know, the contemplation of adding green space in here creates this kind of hidden spot behind it because there are no doors against the wall, so keeping it open, it's no storage in that area. But I do think, you know, whatever we do on this south side, you know, these multiple entries, the multiple isn't gonna be the same. So that would change where we would end up with more of a facade, a landscaping along the south side of the drive more than it would be on the north side of the drive, if there was a development down there. I, I don't foresee any development that we do and have, have thought through and contemplated that would require the multiple entries into a parking bay like it used to be. Whatever we did, it would end up having more of a, a singular part, pull-in with parking and, and a, you know, to be different than what is there now, create a landscape separation to the, to the existing mall facility. And, and at that time, maybe there's a rework of the, of the actual access drive, in which case then we can do some landscaping up against the building. You know, it's all gonna be developed, dependent on what, what happens in the future on that south end of the parcel.
Yeah, I think, I think given that this is all part of, still owned by the current owner, I think there would be, you know, it's, it's, so it's not like At Home is owning that piece.
Correct.
We would have opportunity to address those other facade, those other sides of the building in the context of an actual plan. So I, I, I think we could. in the context of an actual plan. So I think we could deal with it at that time.
Correct. And I, I think it's our intent, I would agree with Ken and, you know, we've started and Eric, you and I have talked about this in the past. You know, I think our intent here is that we're going to completely redo this and work it in with your master plan. You know, and certainly I think the board's input on the way the roads are, you know, the access around it, the buffers between the residential zones, all of that has to be reworked and looked at as a master plan. You know, certainly with all of the board's input and, you know, the potential if that were, let's just to say, you know, we were to look at some, you know, housing, you know, to put in a sufficient buffer zone between the commercial and that project, which it would eliminate pretty much all of those cuts and put in green space.
Yep. Okay, yeah, that sounds, it sounds like we're looking too far ahead at this time, so.
Yeah.
So that, appreciate those comments. With that, I move we accept architecture as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben? Oh, Ben had stepped out. Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye.
I'm back, aye.
And Ben, aye. Okay, there we go. Motion passes for architecture, seven to zero.
Thank you, everyone. Have a wonderful evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Andrew.
Appreciate everyone's help here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, texture.
All right. Great new additions to the town as well. We've got a couple of adjournment items to deal with. First up is Locust Grove Crossing. I move that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to February 18th, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, Stewart Shop at 2245 South Road. I move that the planning board adjourn the public hearing to February 18th, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Next up, Arlington Farms Malabar Realty. I move that the planning, that the public hearing be adjourned to February 18th, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call, I mean, sorry, just called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Last adjournment is Vassarian Institute. I move that the public hearing be adjourned to March 18th, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. At this time, I move that we allow public comment on any other items on tonight's agenda. And we ask that you limit the comments to no more than three minutes and we will consider them during this portion of the meeting, but not respond to them. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Anyone have any comments on any other agenda items tonight? Remember, star six to unmute your phone?
Yep, or raise your hand if you're on Zoom. I have a Stephen Farrell. Here's his comment.
Okay, Stephen, go ahead.
Stephen?
You wish to comment on another item on tonight's agenda? Or maybe your hand's still raised from at home?
No, I don't think so. I think he had raised his hand.
Can you hear me now?
Ah, there we go.
Oh, there you go.
Okay, sorry, I'm on my cell phone. I'm working, so it's kind of hard to unmute quickly. I don't have anything to say as per the agenda items. I'd just like to say that over the last like two years, I've listened to every one of these meetings on YouTube and I do like the virtual aspect of it. So I don't know if you guys have any say, but when it does go back to in-person meetings, if they can continue the virtual aspect on top of it, it'd be as a, as a town resident, I'd really appreciate it.
Thanks for the comments. It is something we've been discussing, you know, we'd all are eager to move to the post pandemic era and be in person again, but I do, we do see a lot of people participating this way. And so there has been discussion about trying to keep the hybrid approach even once we get back to in-person meetings. So we'll see. We, thanks for the comment.
I really do like it. I mean, I am one of the only like, what, 20 people that watch it on YouTube every week, so. It would be nice to be able to contribute and take part in it. So I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yeah, watching on YouTube is after the fact, so.
Right. Anyone else? And again, you can raise your hand if you're on Zoom or star six to unmute yourself if you're on the phone. Not seeing any. Carl, I think we're.
All right, I move we resume the meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Moving on. Next item, agenda item site plan is the reapproval of the La Cabanita restaurant outdoor seating. And let's see who's on for that. Steve is on, I would think.
Hello, good evening.
Hello?
Can you hear me?
Yep, any, any initial comments or you're just, you know, reapproving what, with no changes, what you have done before?
Okay, well, essentially, it's the same exact size patio that we had done before, except the, the last approval, we were we were providing food down at the parking lot level and now we've changed it to raise that patio up to the finished floor level of the restaurant. So same exact footprint, just different elevation.
Yeah, remember, there were some, some issues with the ramping or whatever and so that, that solves that. All right. Kristen, you want?
Steve did it beautifully. Staff is recommending that the board waive public hearing, adopt a seeker resolution and adopt a conditional site plan resolution for reapproval. There were just a couple of engineering related comments as there were for planning staff, but very minor. Oh, I will point out, there was one other concern about sale of alcohol as part of this application. I know that that had come up in a discussion with the board prior to this meeting. And so I just wanted to reiterate that we, and I went back and confirmed this, that we were able to review a liquor license application that had been.
They just like zoomed out and there's this other box up.
All right, I'm going to mute. There we go. Sorry about that.
So I just wanted to point out that Steve is, is amenable to providing that information and documentation for this particular reapproval. It was done in the prior application and Steve, if you might just want to provide for the board's benefit what the building closest to that particular restaurant is utilized for. We have had that discussion earlier this week.
Sure. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so there's a, a, a building on the church property that's a garage, then they use it for storage. I have spoken with my client. They did speak, reach out to the liquor authority and the liquor authority says, once the patio is built, we need to provide photographs. Our application that they have is still valid. They just need photographs and they need to see a finished patio before they can provide us with a liquor license to start providing liquor on, on the patio, once it's complete. I did also reach out to Mr. Bozek, the town engineer. He gave me some information. So I'm working on getting a few documents that he was looking for that we will provide as well. And speaking with Chrissy in zoning, apparently that there was a fee that needed to be paid and that has been taken care of.
All right, thanks. Let's go around the board for comments. Peter?
I, I just want to be certain with regard to this, the liquor license and the 200 foot setback, that that will, will be part of, that would be part of the approval, condition of approval. Is that right?
I don't know if it.
Well, it is a condition of approval to provide the documentation again. Again, this was approved prior with the documentation. We could make sure that there's a note on the plan, but ultimately that building.
The only problem with that is that our approval has nothing to do with the state liquor license, the state liquor authority. We could have approved the application, but if it's in, if it's not in compliance with the, with the state liquor authority's regulations, it has nothing to do with us.
So what I was asking Steve to do before was to just demonstrate on the plan the distance between where the patio would be and the closest building or structures to the adjacent property and owners. In a conversation that was offline, I, I'll just reiterate, I don't know if, Steve, you just mentioned it. I was distracted by something in the room here. But the, the closest building, which is about 65 feet, is used for storage. It's actually not utilized for school or services. And so the closest building I think that is, is just beyond that 200 foot mark north, or I'm sorry, east. I'm getting my directions confused, but we'll make sure that Steve demonstrates that on the plan.
Okay, and I don't know if it, if it's, is it really tied to this plan because we could approve a patio and they could serve food out there without.
Right, Lisa, I was going to just ask you if you wouldn't mind just to clarify, right? It's the state liquor authority has jurisdiction over the liquor license. The patio is a patio for a restaurant. Ultimately, they need to have a liquor license to serve alcohol there. Does that involve us?
No, I was actually going to say that, that it is you know, if it turns out that they can't serve alcohol on the patio, then they can't serve alcohol on the patio because of the state liquor authority. And it wouldn't necessarily have anything to do with the planning board considerations of whether they could still eat outside on the patio or other things. So I truly think it's something that the state liquor authority has jurisdiction over and that the planning board can ensure. State liquor authority will take care of it one way or the other. And I think the applicant is more, would be more wary about violating anything from the state liquor authority than they would necessarily from the planning board. So.
All right, that was, that was part, really, my question. Do we, does it have to be a condition of approval?
No, it does not.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so just for clarity's sake, because I do not have the other buildings located and I think we'd need to get a surveyor involved to do that. Are we going to be required to locate buildings and show you them on our site plan? Or are we okay with what we have?
Steve, you're fine with what you have.
Okay.
I think it only comes into question if the liquor authority has, has concerns.
It was already approved once, so.
All right. Let's move on. Ben, do you have any comments?
Yeah, just looking at the building on the, facing the building on the left side, you had a lift there. Like a handicap type lift. Is that still going to be there?
Uh, let's see here, looking at the building on the left. There currently, that lift exists now for handicap access to the structure itself.
Okay. There's no change with that. Okay, thank you.
So that'll remain through anybody, yeah, they could get out to the patio through the restaurant then, correct?
Correct.
All right. Move on to Nicole?
Yeah, no, I don't have any comments. Yeah, that's, that's it.
Nothing further. And Rocco?
No real commentary regarding the plan, but I, I would look forward to the patio being built so I can enjoy a meal there.
Sounds good.
That's it.
Bob?
Can I just say one thing? I'm, I'm sorry. I did have a note here and I'm not sure if you guys did it or not, but the, I believe it was the water department said that the last backflow prevention test that was done was in 2019.
Correct. We, I've spoken with my client and they are in the process of finding out what company did that for them and they're going to have that re-certified.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, great. Bob? Any comments? You go to Joan then?
Sorry, I was, I was muted. I don't have any additional comments.
Okay, thanks, Bob. Joan?
I have no comment. Thank you.
Yep, and same myself. It's a reapproval. We've went through it quite a bit in the previous submissions, so we're ready for motions.
I move that the planning board determine that the proposal meets the criteria for seeker type two action pursuant to seeker part 617 dot 5C1, requiring no further environmental review.
Second.
To waive the public hearing?
Yep. Before I, before we second that one, I'll, I move that we, that the planning board waive the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Do we have a second on the seeker motion from Nicole? Second. Moved and seconded for seeker. Called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero.
I move that the planning board grant conditional site plan reapproval for the La Cabanita restaurant outdoor seating as depicted on the plan. Set received August 12th, 2019 and last revised August 5th, 2019, signed by the chairman on September 5th, 2019. Subject to the following, one through seven.
Second. Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote for conditional approval. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. All right, good luck with the project.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Me too. And as Rocco said, we look forward to trying a meal there. All right, next up is Valley Christian Church, time extension. Anyone have any comments on that? Seeing none, I move that the planning board grant two 90 day time extensions of conditional site plan approval from February 20th, 2021 forward to August 19th, 2021.
Second.
Moved and seconded, called to question by roll call vote. Peter?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Nicole?
Aye.
Rocco?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Joan?
Aye.
Myself, aye. Motion passes seven to zero. Any other business that anyone wants to bring forward tonight? Any other motions?
I motion that we terminate tonight's meeting.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Called to question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Welcome to the new year, everyone, and thanks for your participation.
Can we expect more agendas like this?
I know, we're getting spoiled with these.